Welcome, everyone, for day two of our capital improvement program presentation. It is 6:35 or so, January 8th. Manager Alfred, would you take the floor?
We're starting off tonight on page 32.
I forgot the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, first order of business, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, now, back to business.
I wasn't going to correct the chair.
Well, luckily, I caught it myself.
Okay, if we get started tonight, we're starting on page 32, and what we'll be working through tonight will be the recreation leisure service programming, which includes the senior programs and recreation and open space acquisitions. Page 32 starts the program. Under POCS and rec programs, we're going to look at about six different items in senior services. We're going to do the same thing as we did last night. We'll go through the bonding component first, and then we'll go into the specifics for the capital budget for the 15, 16-year. So, in getting started, let's talk about open space acquisition programming. And again, this all starts on page 32 and 33. What we're looking at is that over the past 14 years, we've been involved with 26 different purchase acquisitions, mostly for development rights in conjunction either with Narrow River Preservation Land Trust or for the South Kingston Land Trust. And we've committed about $7.6 million to date in terms of commitments. Overall, we've preserved acreage of about 11,446 acres, which represents about 31.5% of the town's landmass. If you look at page 33 of the document, page 33 shows the ownership distribution in terms of who owns all the open space that we have. And you can see that principal owners would be three: the town of South Kingston, both in terms of the land holdings that we have, or property that's in cluster developments or residential developments where there's been dedicated open space; the land trust itself, South Kingston Land Trust, and the state of Rhode Island. A goodly portion of the state of Rhode Island property, obviously, would be the great swamp. But overall, you've got 11,300 acres of property that have been taken out of development mix to be able to preserve most of that land. The development rights have been taken. In other cases, such as the properties held by the Girl Scouts, there could, in fact, be changes were they to look to liquidate portions of that property. So we need to continue to be vigilant in terms of any of those property holdings that are shown on 33, whether there's any changes as far as proposed ownerships. The other thing that's on page 33 shows real estate conveyance taxes. And I'd want to make sure folks are aware on what we do with real estate conveyance taxes. Those are collected every time a piece of property is sold in the community. Right now, the rate is $2.20 per thousand dollars in value that the seller is responsible to pay at the time of recording of the deed. That was changed back, I think, in 2006. At that time, it was 50 cents per thousand. The additional $1.70 that came into play that year, the town council at that time and all past councils have committed that $1.70 to go into the open space land acquisition fund. So you can see that in large development years, as much as $438,000 have gone into that program. The chart that I've got on the board now is also on page 33, I'm sorry, on page 34. The chart that we're looking at on 34 shows you what we're doing. We're taking in about $250,000 a year in real estate conveyance taxes on average. What we're looking at is the debt service on $6 million that goes out. So you can see debt service in the 15, 16-year for those open space-associated bonds will amount to $369,000. Of that $369,000, the open space, the transfer taxes are going to accommodate $250,000. We also keep a reserve of about $75,000 for each year of the six years of the capital program, assuming that may be additional acquisitions that are necessary. But obviously, any acquisition has to go through the council, and it has to be approved. There are years, over the last three years, we have not been involved with any land acquisitions. At this point, we've got an open space fund balance of about $400,000 that's available. However, we're looking that over the course of the six years, were we to spend $450,000, which is the $75,000 a year going forward, we'd be down to about $100,000 in balance. But at this point, there's no definition in terms of specific spending. It really is something that comes based on when land becomes available for sale, and really when the different organizations that we're involved with would, in fact, have a proposal for town council consideration. We meet periodically with a group which involves state officials, nonprofits, land trusts, and the effort there is to know what exactly are each of those different groups looking at, what potential funding sources are out there, both at the federal and at the nonprofit level. That could be used as leverage for attaining additional property. One of the things that has come to concern is, is the program as necessary as it was several years ago, based on the 31.5% of the property? What's the target that any future council would want to see in terms of land conservation? The last major property acquisition that we did for South Kingston is one that we're going to talk about tonight, and that was when we bought the property on 138, which is 248 acres of land. Before I get to it, though, I wanted to talk. The map that I'm showing is, shows you by color code who owns what property, and you can see that's the 31% of the properties in town that have been preserved. Noyd's Farm is the 248-acre parcel I just mentioned. It's a historic farmstead that's in Kingston. It's just north of 138. It's on the north side of 138, just north of 108. The property stretches all the way to the, almost to the back road that's there. I've got a map here. You can see with this map here. Right here is the intersection, 108 and 138, and we're coming back all along here. This is the property, Old Mountain Field is in Kingston. So there's a lot of people that aren't aware of the actual sheer size of that parcel. But as a farmstead, there's a number of birch stands that are there, there's walking trails, there's animal trails that are there, but there is no trailhead at this point. One of the things that has been considered with the planning board at the direction of the council is for the, for the planning department in conjunction with the Conservation Commission Planning Board to look at the development of a master plan for that property. Certainly, it's not one that we're looking for any type of active play space, but it's is a major investment that the town has with substantial conservation easements and restrictions. But it's property that could be developed for trails. It has trout brooks within it. It has a great deal of natural resources. I think Rex, you could probably give them a better idea, since I see your truck there on the weekends sometimes checking it out. But it's a case where it's a beautiful piece of property that has no public access to it. One of the concerns past councils have had, and I think also one that staff has promoted, is that we'd like to see if there's investments in property, that there be public access to these resources. And unfortunately, a lot of times, when you purchase development rights, you're not purchasing public access rights. Here, we spent the monies to acquire the property, which came out to be only about $12,000 an acre. But what we haven't got at this point, and we purchased that property back in 2006, is we haven't had any public benefit in terms of use. What we're proposing is that the, that recreation fair share fees be used, and that a consultant be hired that would look at various things: site inventory and analysis, so we know exactly what we do have, what are the, and then how can we best provide for public outreach, what type of vision does the public want in terms of that property, and then what type of budget requirements would be necessary for that type of property. I don't think anyone assumes that we're going to have any major development there, but the development of walking trails, which may require, you know, rural bridges, as well as possible piers on the, on the brooks, may be something that would be developed in a master plan. It would then need to come forward as far as any capital cost for the actual development of that property at some time in the future. It isn't in any of our program for the next six years. If the master plan were developed, the council would review it. If they accepted it, then they would look at what type of an implementation schedule, if anything, they would want with it. But again, if you're going to buy property of this nature, and you're using public dollars for it, the public should have a benefit. Right now, there's one driveway that goes in, we can probably get one or two vehicles, but it's inadequate, and it's an unsafe access if we were going to be inviting the public in for the use of that property. So at this point, we're suggesting that we put various groups together that would come up with a master plan, use a facilitator to come up with that plan, and then be able to look at what type of permits we would need from a DEM, as well as road opening permits on 138, to be able to have an appropriate parking area for people to be able to get into the, into the property.
Steve, is there a, you're saying it's a historic farmstead. Is there a building on the property? Is there a house?
No, there's, there's nothing on the property at this point. It was agricultural fields many, many years ago. Vin, do you have more of the history on it?
Not a whole lot, but I think there's some foundation remnants on the property, and it is very big, as Steve was saying. It's got almost a half a mile of frontage on Route 138.
Where is it, Vin? It's between 108 and Route 1? Is it going that way?
No, if you, you know, the Brandywine Development, the new development?
Yeah.
It's kind of across the street from that, so it's a little bit westerly of Rose Hill. And it does contain a stream that contribu, it's a contributory headwater to the Sawgetucket River, as Steve mentioned.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, the other thing that I think is pretty interesting is the elevation difference between 138 and the northwest corner is about 110 feet. And that's a little different for our community, which doesn't have a lot of relief to the property, but it's, and there's some historic cemeteries on the property as well, so. I think it was related to the Meyer family, and in fact, who the town purchased it off back in '06. And it does represent a very interesting opportunity for a passive recreational use for the community.
Sounds great. I'm excited about this.
Yeah.
But I'd also like to see the council be invited on that field audit walk, if we could.
Oh, there's absolutely none.
If anybody else is interested, but I would be.
I think the main thing is to get the consultant in place, and then we would have the field walk that's there. The consultant would do the inventorying and analysis of the different properties, but we would like to make the public available of that property, but we've got to be able to control the access at this point.
Oh, I agree. You know, I've always wanted public access. Every time we buy something for open space, I always talk about, you know, where's the public access? How can the public view it, or touch it, feel it, walk into it? I think this is a great, a great thing, long time coming.
That's the project. There's no more questions on that, we'll move on. The next project, which is identified on page 36, is another project that's been around for several years, and we have not completed it for a number of reasons. And that's the Broad Rock Playfields Walking Path that would take you from Dominic Road and take you to the South County Commons. And I'll show you the picture first. When we look at the property, this is where the facility is going to be, the gym will be constructed. This is where the senior centers will be, is our playfields, the plans to be added. This is a contract that has existed, it's a short contract for the farm, that we get access all the way to Route 1. At the time that the common was developed, we always had, well, the farm always had a right to pass and repass to get to Route 1, so we still have the access. The sewers that were put into South County Commons come through that path. So we opened up that path several years ago when the common was developed. Right now, what we're suggesting in this plan is for us to pave that which is on the public property. We had talked with the owners at the Commons, and talked about them paying for a caution that was on their property, because it has specific benefit to the people that are at this location. And also, we didn't want to use public money on the other side. We've looked for a number of grants, and we have not been able to get to a point where we could grant quickly after that, would give us, we talked to the owner too, of giving us easement rights, where we would actually have the right to maintain the easement, where we could use the state of that one. At this point, we'd like to get the paving done up to the, to the property, and use that as our incentive for greater interest for the commons, so then they can be able to get the rest of the path done. The problem was that there's a major grade separation here. This is the, where the gym, gym is located at the, at the commons. The sewers come down on an angle like this, and what they want to do is that we're going to have an interconnect, and we come in right about where that, where the gym building is located now. There may be the necessity for a series of switchbacks to be able to deal with the grade separation that's there, where we'll be getting access to those statements. So this becomes a little bit more pricey here. There's also wetlands that are in place. We've got wetland permits to be able to construct the bike path on both the public and the private property. And that permit isn't going to expire, because right now, all of the DDM permits have been told. So what we're not concerned about DDMs is part of it. What we're concerned with is that we had no interest from the commons to be able to provide any type of economic assistance in terms of being able to work with this property. If we can get first basic done, it'll give people the opportunity, particularly the senior center, to be able to use this as a senior, as a senior block. It's an excellent, beautiful, cantilevered area through the, through the woods. But it also takes away from people that are mobility in here, because it's just without a base. So if we can pay that.
Steve, I've done that walk, and it's amazing how fast you can get from, from the light behind Old Mountain Field to the river at the commons. Very quickly.
And we think that if we can get, if we can use it more, we also think that we, that this path may be beaten down. But at this point, what we're looking to do is to say, we've got, we've committed the $200,000 to get this done. I'm not so sure. I'd like to advance the project as we've got it in the capital budget to have it done next year. What I'd like to do, now that the additional recreation money was approved in referendum, is to see what the state grant programs are going to look like, to see if we can get a renewed, some type of grant that will allow us to get the approvals necessary to get it out here. But I don't want to do it independently if that grant money's going to be out there. I would rather wait for the grant money to be made available. We think that that, that the state will probably have the first grant money available, which there shouldn't, there's not that much of it going to be over the next two years, but if they do, we'd like to be a participant on that. We've had state officials out to see it. People are interested in that project. We've had a lot of local interest in that. When we deal with healthy places by design, they certainly have been a proponent of it. It also provides connectivity, because if we can get a paved path from the commons, it would allow anybody at the commons, without going onto a public road, to be able to get, really, to Old Mountain Field. Because we've got artificial paths here from, from the playfields, and we've got the paths that will all the way down to the, and when you get into Old Mountain Field, you have the opportunity to take the bridge across to get to the, get to the, and pull out of that road as well. So connectivity is, and connectivity is what we're really looking for here, and we think it will bring this community more into, into the general community. But at this point, we're suggesting, let's use the $200,000 to place holders at this point, even if we need to, as an independent project. Yet, at the same time, we may want to look at what type, what type of grants and funds are going to be available in the future for this type of, of activity. There's also DOT money that we're looking at that may be available for, for these types of walkways. Linear POCS is something that's coming, coming more and more. I think anybody that's been over the Route 195 through Providence is seeing probably one of the largest linear POCS that we've seen in the state that's, that's been developed there. It's a combination of a park and bicycle path. I think we could do something very nice here. I don't want to rush it, though, but we do need to make sure that there's commitment on the council's part, if we can get the grant dollars, to be able to move that project forward. And if there's enough public support, just to do it independently, if the grant money isn't going to be made available. But I think it's an important expansion of our, of our POCS system, and I think it's also something that fits into the idea of trying to get people out to do exercise and to be, to be more physically fit. And we think that that, that, in addition to having, you know, the gymnasium that would be constructed here, and access to the school there and so, it's just a bunch of things. It's been, it's been around for several years as a proposal, but until we can really get a commitment on, on the private property, I'm not sure how long it's going to take us to go. The last time we dealt with the property owner, he agreed to give us the easement, and a, and we were able to move forward with that, but the monies just weren't available for us to, to move forward. So I'd like to keep that project active, but we're showing it as a 15, 16 construction. I'm not sure if we will move it to a construction stage unless we can see the grants availability.
Steve, I'd like to just make a comment, if you don't mind. I look at this as not only a safety issue, because people are not crossing major roads, they're tandemly walking into what is a viable access to actually support local businesses, but the other thing is, is that I think it's a quality of life issue. And if people can be at the YMCA, people can be at, you know, the middle school, people can be at the recreational center, and I think it's going to support the town very well. So you have my support on that. I feel very strongly about the fact that it's going to be something that can be very successful for the town.
Steve, we did talk a little bit about possible solar lighting on that path, so I thought we did at one point, that would enhance, like if you were going to the movies or something.
That would be difficult because of the tree cover that's there. I don't think we talked about the solar lighting there. When we got to the commons area, there's, there's no tree stands where you could get some light in that area there, but along the pathway itself, it's heavily treed, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to generate the power that would be necessary.
Okay.
So what time during the year do you think we'll know about the availability of state grants? And is that through the Department of Health primarily?
There's two different sources we'd be looking at. One is DOT, when they're looking at bike path money, federal bike path money. And secondly, would be the recreation bond money that was approved in November. They haven't developed that program yet. I'm not sure, Terry, whether you've heard any, anything on that at all, as to when that money's going to become available.
We've not heard anything. It's, it varies. The last couple of rounds of grants tended to be in the fall, when they were accepting applications, but it's really up to DEM when they post it, and we were constantly looking at the website for any updates.
Any other questions on it? If not, we'll move on. I'm going to let Terry present with the Guild. I think I made reference last night to the fact that any improvements that we do with the Guild are going to be paid for through, through a bond, but the bond debt service is going to be paid for through investment income from the Guild Trust Funds. And the last bond issue that we had was back in 1995. We're finishing the last of the bond payments on that million-dollar bond, and we'll be in a position with a 2016, 2017 bond issue to be able to do the improvements on the Guild. I'm not sure if everybody has seen, but this is what the front of the Guild now looks like. We had serious problems with the staircase, and Terry and her crew were able to put together proper designs and to get third-party contractors in to put the work in place, and then I think a lot of the railing and all was done in-house. But it certainly, I think, is a major improvement on the property from what we had there, and also takes away a real serious, serious, serious safety problem we had for access to the building. With that, if you want to...
So the, this was kind of an early start to our rehab of the, of the facility, simply because of the condition of the stairs last summer. In addition to the exterior staircase, we have a number of different improvements to the infrastructure of the building itself, primarily the HVAC system, which currently the, the building does not have an air conditioning system in place. We use individual air conditioners throughout the different activity rooms, with the exception of the gymnasium. It's just too large, not very efficient, but we just wouldn't be able to, to hold summer activities without, without air conditioning in that building. We also are in desperate need of new windows. Again, it comes down to an efficiency factor in that we're just, you know, the money we're spending on heating the building with inefficient windows and non-effective HVAC system is just costing us more every year. So we do intend to upgrade the HVAC, add windows. We've got doors that need to be replaced. We've got some redesign of the gymnasium, along with the rec center plans. The Guild is intended to become more of a passive recreation and cultural arts center for the rec department, and with that, the gym is envisioned to become more of a performing arts area. There's a stage in place, but we'd like to see a redesign so that it's more user-friendly in terms of how we operate programming, like theater or music and those types of things. So we're looking to, to do that in the interior as well. And I'm not sure how far our million dollars will go, but as we look at the, look at the plans, we may have some redesign of some of the other interior rooms that have not been touched, primarily on the second floor, and some areas even on the third floor of the building. Right now, it's, it's a shell. It needs to be insulated and upgraded for storage space.
Just a couple of comments as far as the funding of the Guild. As I said last night, there is no tax dollars that go into the Guild whatsoever. There is an endowment fund. The endowment fund for the Guild right now is about $15.5 million. On a yearly basis, it'll generate, in the basis, it'll generate, in the area of $400,000 in, in income. Any of the income that we don't use toward operations, usually about 50, 50 to 100,000 dollars, goes into a second account, and that account is called reinvested income. The reinvested income account right now has about $350,000. That's the account that we use to pay for capital improvements at the guild and to pay debt. So when we talk about a million dollars in terms of debt that we would incur, first-year costs would be about $85,000 if we were at a 4% interest rate, and that would be coming out of the reinvested income account. So it's not going to affect us as far as the amount of monies that we need from investment income for the operations of the guild. It will be coming from the monies that we've already set aside for where we took in more money than we actually budgeted as a, as a revenue to pay for the operating costs of the guild. Are there any questions on the guild proposal? If not, the, the next project starts on page 38, and I think this project is well-known to everyone on the council. It's the Community Recreation Center. We do want to walk through that. We are still looking at the target numbers that we talked about at the time that the million dollar bond referendum was considered by the voters in November. I think it's important, we provided the council back on December 4th with an update on the rec center, in terms of talking about the fact in July of 2014, the council had authorized the engineering and architectural contract with Brewster Thornton Group Architects. We had finished the first phase of it, which was the design work that was, was developed in advance of the bond referendum consideration. And there was two additional phases that were authorized. The second phase, which has been put into effect as of December, is the actual design of the bidding documents that would be necessary for the facility. We're expecting that we would have bidding documents ready for going out to the market, probably in late May, probably June, more, more reasonable, I think. But what we would, what we're doing at this point is spending about another $260,000 to be able to get that, get us to a point where the bidding documents are in place. Once we get the bidding documents, there'll be additional cost takeoffs to determine. What we have, most likely the project will be bid with a number of options and, and alternates, looking at different infrastructure improvements. There'll be alternates that deal with heating systems, alternates that deal with lighting systems, anything which is going to have potential cost savings for the, for the facility. There's no changes in what the proposed design is from what had been done and presented back in October. Obviously, until the architects get the final design plans in place, we don't expect to see any changes with that, but we would be expecting that, that, that Phase Two will be completed in or around late May, early June. We would hope to have the construction contract awarded and construction to begin early summer, and with a potential construction completion date of September of 2016. Now, again, this is a very fluid schedule. A lot of changes can occur in terms of our scheduling. We are still concerned, and I've always been concerned with, you know, what our cost will be and whether or not we're being the most efficient as we can in terms of the facility. It is important to note that in addition to this building layout that we've got on this slide, the design has been completed in such a way that it would provide opportunity for as much as a second building, were that necessary, five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. As we see the community grow or change in terms of its, its demographics, there may be different needs that we have. Going back to when we purchased the Dominic Savio property, the objective of the council at that time was to buy a large enough piece of land that was contiguous as, as a means of being able to set up one location where we would have multiple services available. One that would be more efficient for us in terms of maintenance preservation, but it would also provide an opportunity to create a second village center. You know, so now we've got the school there, we've got the senior center there, we've got the, the athletic fields there, we've got the connectivity to the, to the commons, as well as to Old Mountain Field and the, the business district. So what we wanted to do is to make sure that wherever the sighting occurred, it wasn't going to over-expense the property. The lower area of this property, in this area here, is suitable for a field development, for a field parking. When we purchased the property from the diocese, the diocese had a caveat that they wanted, and that caveat was to allow for Proust or Monsignor Clark to be able to pay for the cost of building an athletic field there on town property and having first rights of use, with the town having the ability to use the property for its own purposes, other than on a negotiated schedule of what they would have. The, the original purchase of the, of the property had, I think it was a five-year potential for them to develop the field. Obviously, the five years has come and gone. Council has extended it once. We have not seen that there's any interest at, at this time for them to move forward. But my point in mentioning this is that we do have opportunity for additional activities that could occur within this property, as well as there was a mere inch of visibility could be there. So the potential is there. The, the one thing that we want is the flexibility. I don't want to see any future councils' hands tied from being able to do what they feel is necessary at the time. Land is, is just at such a premium, we've got to make sure that any uses that we propose on this is not going to be over-expensing the property. The other thing that any development here we do is provide for additional parking here. The grade elevation changes here are, are not, are not too great, but there is a good deal of weather. This is what we hear. So there's some of the property that's not going to be usable. But in terms of master planning on the property, this is going to provide, you know, future councils with an opportunity to look at whatever type of expanded services or new services that are going to be necessary, and not have to be looking for a piece of land to do it on, or to destroy something that currently exists to, to put a new service in place. So that's the objective of it. That's the timeframe that we're operating with at this time. I think the, once we get to a point of completed bidding documents, we'll have renderings available to bring back to the council in advance of the, of seeking the bids. We've continued to, to talk with the members of the initial planning committee. We have not brought those folks back together, because our position has been that they've done their job in terms of scoping out what it is. Now we need to get the consultant to put, to put that onto paper and be able to come up with better expectations on what costing it's going to be, once they define particularly what the utilities are, the heating systems and the air conditioning systems, as well as some of the equipment that has been proposed for that site. There's a lot of cost differences on different options that you seek. But what my concern is, I would rather spend money on that than to spend money on things that are going to make it look glossy, because of the operational cost savings that we can have by having more efficient infrastructure. And that is what we've tasked the, the architect with at this point, in terms of coming up with what those different alternates would be, and then having those within the bidding documents itself. Terry, what am I missing on this?
I think, I think you've touched upon it all, Steve. I've had some conversations with the architect, and we are scheduling meetings to continue the process of putting together the, the construction documents. They're anxious to get moving.
Joe?
I have a question. I understand it's not part of the capital improvement, but operational costs as part of the total package. Do we have an estimate on operational costs?
Yeah, we've put an, an estimate out in advance of the referendum, and, how do I When we put the estimate together, Joe, we were looking at a facilities manager, 40% of a sports and fitness supervisor, the control desk, because you have to have somebody at the control desk, as well as maintenance, both full-time and part-time, because we were looking at the facility being open for a total of 100 operating hours a week. So with that, the cost of just the personnel and benefits would be about $282,000. That's the base cost. When we look at the operational expenses, we looked at the operational expenses of the guild, which was about, because of the age of that building, we wanted to look at what the heating costs were at. We looked at those costs, and those costs were about another $71,000. So we had a total figure of about 353 in that first year. But again, that's an abbreviated year, because you'd be looking at starting it out in September. One of the things that isn't included here is, we haven't determined how we would operate this facility, whether we would set it up as a enterprise fund, whether we set it up, how we would set it up, or whether we would be looking to recover depreciation. If you're going to recover depreciation, then your costs would probably go up by, you know, another 50 or 60,000 dollars a year. But in covering depreciation, it would mean that any capital improvements for replacement of existing facility or components would have money on reserve, rather than being done in a capital budget-type way, where you pay for it on a pay-as-you-go basis. So there's a number of things that are still left open as to how we're going to do it. And I think a lot of it comes down that we've got to see when that facility would be able to open, and then how, how much revenue can be generated from the facility in terms of some of the system users. Because some of the system users are going to cost us money anyway. If, if, you know, if we have people that want to play volleyball from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock in the morning, we can accommodate that service, but we also have to have maintenance of the building to be able to open and close it. So there's, there's going to be increased costs if we're going to be generating revenue. We've got to find out what the net revenues would be. So a lot of it, right now, is, is still up in the air until we can, we, we get into the facility. But, you know, I think that the 353 was an honest estimate that we put together in October. Whether it, whether it holds at being that number, I'm hopeful that it can. But, you know, until we get into the operation, the consultant, we'd be required to, to put a first-year operations cost together for us in terms of, you know, the, the electrical costs, the building maintenance costs. And of course, we're just not that far at this point to, to get to that, that level.
Can I ask you a question as well? The utilization for high school sports, how will that be graded or paid? Will that come out of the school committee budget, or is that something that we will dictate in terms of modifying the budget that we have here?
Well, we actually, we, we utilize the school gymnasiums now, the recreation department does. So there's a sharing of, of resources. The, the recreation department maintains all of the, the athletic fields and facilities, so there's a shared usage, usage of resources. So there wouldn't be necessarily a charge to the school department, per se, but it's, we will still be utilizing the gymnasiums that the school department has in place, just because of the, the sheer numbers and the programs that'll be happening, that will need them.
Yes, I, I mean, I look at the lack of facilities that we have right now for track and field, certain, you know, other sports programs, and I personally would like every child to take advantage of any opportunity that they could have. I just didn't know how the cost would play out, so that...
Right, right. And Terry Lynch was on the, the planning committee as well, so he, he was an important part of putting together the, the plans for this, this building.
Just to, in closing on Joe's question, one of the things that we put in the capital budget on page 39, as far as the operational costs, was that we estimated that the cost would be between five and eight cents per thousand on that first year of operation. It may be 10 cents. But what we, what, my point is that, that the, the cost per household would be somewhere in the area between, you know, between a $15 and $30, or $35 for that operation. That's what I would forecast it. And I've said from day one, Joe, that, that we can build anything. It's the cost of operating things that are the most important things for the community. You know, it's just like now, we're going through a capital budget. We're spending a million dollars on, on rec fields, but when people say, well, gee, over six years, you're going to spend that million dollars? And you say, well, yeah, but you realize we have 17 parks in town. And it's, it's the cost of maintaining the places, once we put them, put them into place, that really is, is, is the long-term cost. We can get through any bond issue. It's being able to maintain those facilities, because the higher the utilization is, the higher the maintenance is going to be in the future as well. So yeah, it's, it's something that's upfront with us at this point, and we look at it all of our buildings. When we look at the seniors program, you're going to see that we're replacing, putting money aside for the roofs at this point. We're putting money aside for the HVAC replacement. And it's the same thing, is that what we want to have is that money in advance, so that it's not going to really have major impacts on our operational costs. Other questions as far as the Community Rec Center? If not, we'll move on to Marina Park. My computer can catch up. Marina Park, there's really only two projects that we're looking at, at doing. And it's to repave the parking lot that is in front of the restaurant, and to stone seal the parking lot that's in front of the coffee shop. And what we're expecting is that we would be able to put in an inch and a half or by two minutes. The, the parking lot, this parking lot is in such poor condition, we can't maintain that with a stone seal. The other problem that we're going to have with a stone seal, with the sized vehicles that are in and out of that parking lot with trailers, rips up the stone seal. So what we're going to do is we will, we will rip up what's there, put down a proper road base, and put in about three inches of asphalt. We're not looking to change the configuration of that lot, but we have learned over the summer that we're going to have to do better channeling, because some of the, some of the people that are using that facility are abusing it. Parking vehicles in the grassed area that really is part of a park and not part of a extended parking area. We have no difficulty with the parking of the large vehicles and the trailers on the grass section behind the parking lot. Where we have concerns, though, is when what's happening is people are taking vehicles and taking them throughout the entire grass area where the walking paths are, because they want to find shade for their vehicles while they're out in the boat. So what we did last summer, recs had to cordon off the area, and it, it didn't look like what we want it to look like as, you know, so we're going to have to make some changes with that. The other thing that we've got is that because we have marinas that are there, we have people that are sleeping on the boats. So we've got overnight parking that's there. Now, if you have a slip, and you're going to allegedly sleep on the boat, yet you have a camper that's a 60-footer, they're really setting up camp for the summer. So we've got to deal with a couple of those issues there, but at this point, the, the capital improvements that we need are really to deal with the parking lots first, and then, secondly, to deal with the, the boat ramp. The boat ramp, as you can see, is in poor condition. It is heavily used. It is heavily used, not just by our residents, but it's heavily used by persons from Massachusetts and Connecticut as well, when you look at the plates that are in the, the parking area. This is another area where we need to see DEM dollars come forward to assist us, because this... this really has a lot to do with economic development. This is bringing people into the state that are using their boats, and then are going to require services. So it's, there's an economic value to, to that, that boat ramp being there. It can last several more years with, with proper maintenance. The biggest problem that, that it has is that the area's been blown out below where the, where the concrete slabs are. So you've got a pit that's there, based on people starting their engines and blowing the, the silt materials out of the way. That's going to take some maintenance there, but at this point, we have not got a lot of money committed toward Marina Park. We had the opportunity for about a million-dollar grant, but the problem with the million-dollar grant was that they wanted a twenty percent match, and what they wanted to do is to open up both the, the main boat ramp and the secondary boat ramp, and they wanted to expand the parking. Essentially, it was going to become a state facility, and we felt that it was going to destroy, it was going to destroy what, what we have there as a rural municipal park. The other thing is that we want that park to also serve other purposes. We have the Wakefield Band that puts on wonderful concerts there. If we were to allow for overdevelopment to occur, we would not really have a space for them. One of the things that I mentioned to you on page forty, and page forty, is that the boat ramp and the performance area, the performance area that's listed here is with the, the Wakefield Concert Band. And I'm going to let Terry speak to the issue. But Wakefield Band, what they're interested in doing is building a band shell. There's some extended discussions occurring as to the location of the band shell, because where they would like to place it, and I think in where the Recreation Commission would like to place it, may be, may be different. But I think that what we're looking at is that they're, they're looking to be able to raise upwards of $250,000, and are asking for licensing ability to be able to site on the Marina Park property. I think everybody thinks that would be a wonderful idea, as long as we can get an agreement as far as what the master planning of, of the park is. Recreation Commission's objective is to keep the main green area open as a scenic vista, and I think that may be the location that the band members would like to see the shell constructed on. Rec Commission would like to see where the existing performance area is set up, which is on the, the western side of the, the park. They would like to see that be redeveloped, so that it would, with the amphitheater that's there, have the band shell at that location. I think the discussions will be ongoing, and I think they'll come to resolution, just as I think it's going to take a while for them to be able to generate those monies. We wanted to include it in the capital budget, just to make sure that the council was aware that this proposal is out in the community, and really has mustered a good deal of support with the folks that have attended the, the concerts during the summer. One of the other problems that we've run into with the concerts is that they've become so popular, that we've got folks sitting on both the, the green space at the water's edge, and on the main field itself. The road's still a public road, and it's open for access to Ramp Point Marina, and we've got people traversing the road, and kids playing as we've got traffic. So what we need to do is to really look for, from a public safety perspective, on where we can have that type of a performance area that's going to be safe for everybody when they go to the, go to the event itself. It's also lends itself to the opportunity to, to provide other services during those type of performances with the, you know, the food trucks or those types of things. So there's, there's a, there's a lot of different opportunities. Marina Park is still a facility that, there could be some major changes. I mean, it's gone to the days that, that Joe was there with the Heritage Festival. But, and the Yum-Pah-Pah Band, that, I don't think that's coming back. But it, it's a case of, we really need to, as we've talked about on the other properties, we need to manage our properties to make sure that we don't give away the potential for other uses that, that may, may be necessary, you know, in the not-so-immediate future. But the improvements that we have there will be the parking lot, we're looking at also dealing with the, the boat ramp. But the boat ramp, we're talking about improvements, maintenance up till the year 2020, 2021. Terry, anything else on Marina?
I would just add that, in, relative to the Wakefield Concert Band, the Waterfront Commission has also been made aware of the interest in, in a band shell, and they will be also seeking further information and updates on it, as they're very in tune to what is going on at Marina Park. They take their role very seriously, and when, when issues come up, they are, they are advised and pass their recommendations on it. So they are also kept, kept involved with, with this particular site.
Steve, I know we don't charge to use the boat ramp, is that correct? We don't charge?
We do not.
Was there ever any thought to charging, like, out of non-residents for usage? I mean, that would be a way of getting some revenue.
We, we tried that. We tried that about ten years ago. And once we put parking attendants at the parking lot, people drove down to the point and launched their boats there. Because they had free access.
Where's the point? What, what do you mean? What point?
You should tell me about a second boat ramp. I, I don't know about one, because that's where we put our boat in.
My point to you is that you're not going to get people to pay. It was, it cost us that summer, we did it for about a month, and it cost us more for the attendant than we took in in revenue.
That's amazing to me, because where can you park? I mean, you, we see those big SUVs with the boat trailer behind them. I mean, they're there all day long, and like you say, overnight, and they're off in their boats, probably at Block Island. So, I mean, they're paying to park in Galilee.
Well, we can test the market again, but I'm going to tell you that we were quite surprised that, that there was a, there was a complete non-use of that lot.
Wow.
I'm really surprised about that.
When we started that.
Especially in the summer, because you have the restaurants down there, you have the art club down there, you have people that are down there all the time. We, we probably should test it. We probably should.
Well, understand that it's not just the parking for the boat ramp, it's the parking for the restaurant as well, and it's parking for the, for the marina as well. So when you get done with those folks in the parking lot, there's a limited number of spaces that are going to be available for the trailers. One of the things we looked at was, do we attempt to have that park, that, that parking lot secured, and allow for free access in front of the coffee shop? And the, again, the real question is, if you're going to be paying somebody, you know, ten to twelve dollars an hour, plus, plus fiker costs on that, once you get the vehicles in there, they're all day long, or you've got to keep a specific area open for the restaurant itself, you're not going to make, you're not going to make the money back.
Well, it's too bad. I mean, you can't go to Cape Cod, you can't go to Galilee, you have to pay everywhere to park. And to use a boat ramp and take up all those spaces, like, those people have taken up two large spaces with the boat trailer and the, you know, whatever they're towing it with. And if they're non-residents, I mean...
The, the difficulty would be that that lot is also open to, to the public.
No, I know.
For just visiting the park, and how do you...
I know. Just a thought.
Separate the two, and, you know...
We can give you a bucket if you want to go down there during the summer and see what you can collect.
No, not me. No, no.
Get our kids to go down there and like...
We could hire a bunch of teenagers.
Well, I would hate to see that lot even take away from the viable businesses that are truthfully paying rent to us as well, and that they do valet parking, and that is something that I think we need to take into consideration. No big deal, I mean, it's going on forever, but the bottom line is, if the town can generate a few more dollars of revenue, then I think that's something we should look at.
It's like going to the beach. People expect to pay to go to the beach now, you know? Every beach.
Well, we can take a look at it. As I say, I'm, I'm concerned, because I was amazed at, at what occurred when we, when we tried to put the parking provisions into place. And the other thing that happened was, we weren't, we weren't requiring, we didn't have a parking attendant at the second lot. So as soon as they saw the beach attendant there for the parking, they were going over to the other lot. So, you end up, there's a number of problems that, that it creates. And, and recognize too, that, that the, the restaurant itself is very busy at this point.
Right.
And we certainly don't want to take parking away from them.
No, I mean, they have to have parking. That's part of the deal. You know? Renting the land.
Okay, next item is the beach. And just to give you a picture, for those folks that haven't been visiting the beach of recent, these were the pilings that were installed, and the building has been moved, Terry?
It's in progress. It is now off its old piers, and in, in between its old site and its new site, it's currently being moved. It's a very interesting process.
It's slow but deliberate. As far as the, the beach program, what we're looking at really is just setting aside $20,000 a year, or about $120,000 for beach erosion mitigation efforts, or for parking lot improvements. It's just general maintenance that's necessary of a capital nature. Depending on what type of storms we run into, it's going to be a case of how much money we spend. We'll set the money into the reserve as, you know, once we got completed with the moving of the building, the moving of the building and the cost of the new septic system was about $387,000. Most of that was paid for through, through grants that were, that we recovered the costs on. But at this point, once we get the building there, I mean, there's some major improvements that we would like to see done at the beach. The, the playground needs to be upgraded considerably. We've got one new piece that's in there, but the playground really goes back to when we initially constructed the facility. So the, we'd like to see improvements on the playground, we'd like to see improvements as far as the parking is concerned. I did want to mention that we've got the proposal out for farming of the 22 acres that is in front of the town beach. We go out every three years on that, so we're out right now for next summer's requirements. So we've sent it out to anybody who is on the farmer's list, and hopefully we'll get some good, good proposals in there. The one thing that we did do this year that we hadn't done in the past is that we did indicate that there will continue to be a walking path from Cod's Pond Road to the, to the beach area itself, so that the residents in Jerry Brown can get across without having to walk onto Mattoon Beach Road, or on Cod's Pond, and, and cross it. So now, they've, over the years, they've beaten down a path, and it's going to continue to be that way. And we've defined that so that, and indicated to the farmers that whoever takes it has got to have that walking path through the middle of the fields. And it's kind of neat when you've got the vegetables on both sides, and the people walking back and forth to the beach. Probably the most expensive farm field in New England at this point. But recs will be responsible for keeping the, the walking path cut, so that people can get to and from the beach without getting out on the road. It's another one of our objectives in terms of trying to provide the pedestrian accessibility, because we don't have sidewalks in that area.
What does the farmer use for water down there? Is there any water access? I mean, if you're growing vegetables?
I don't think so.
I don't know of any. I'm not sure how they, they grow hay.
What they grow, maybe for pumpkins or something?
This year. I don't recall pumpkins, but in the past, there was a, a corn.
Well, and with the corn, just let me make it clear that we're not allowing for the cow corn to be put in, because it's got to be any of the varieties that are going to be for a sixty-day growth, because what we don't want to do is to take away the ocean vista from, from the people at Blackberry Hill. The first year that we put the, put that out for farming, they grew, I've never seen corn as tall as it was, and you could not see anything from, you couldn't see the, the water from, from Cod's Pond Road. So what we've asked the farm, told the farmers is that we would want to approve whatever they're going to use, as well as the pesticides. We'll take that through a review, and if we need URI's assistance, we'll look. At one time, that field was all potatoes, and it was full of temec. So we want to make sure that whatever is done there, that it's going to be environmentally friendly, as municipal feels. I think the bids are due on that. When, when do they do, then?
Could I just ask you what farms they are? Is that Carpenter's Farm, or is that...
It went out to about twenty different farmers. Anybody that was on the, on the farmer's list. Carpenter's had the, the lease on that property for the last three years. Prior to that, Twin Peaks had the lease, which was Bruce Thunberg.
Yep.
Old Mountain Field. Old Mountain Field is another area that we need to start paying more attention to. We are looking at the replacement of the upper tennis courts. In the current year, there's $40,000 that was, was put aside for the tennis court replacement, and there's $50,000 that's going to be, that's proposed for 15, 16. That'll get those upper courts completely redeveloped. What we're also looking at is a $10,000 item that would occur in 17, 18-year for one of the picnic shelters, and we've been trying to put these in in a number of different parks that we have in town. It's not a high priority item, but it's a placeholder at this point. I think the major thing that we're trying to at least get recognition with council on is a first-time discussion on the need to construct new restrooms in a concession building at Old Mountain Field. The existing facilities that are there are inadequate, and that still is our prime industrial recreation field. It's where all of the heavy recreation, you know, organized sport activities are occurring. It also is an economic engine for that, for a number of different businesses in town, because of the amount of people that go through there. Those facilities are, are not what we would like to have as a presentation. What we're looking at, though, is a cost of about $400,000. At this point, we're showing it as a $400,000 item with a $200,000 question mark. In other words, we need to be able to either find grant money, or some other funding source that is going to assist us, if that's going to become a reality. At this point, as a placeholder, we've only put it out at the 2021 year, but what we want is for public discussion of the issue, and to determine whether or not people agree that this is something that needs to be done. As I mentioned, with the number of parks that we have in town, you know, we've, we've got to spend some money to be able to preserve them. It's easy to build them, but to keep the maintenance on, because some of them are high-maintenance, those restrooms, I'm, I'm not sure how old those are at this point, but...
At least, the, the building's fifty years old, as far as I have been able to tell.
Yes, and I would like to bring up a point with that, too. We are a showcase for the waves there, and I know they have done a lot of improvements, but our high school utilizes Old Mountain Fields on an extreme basis. We have the skate park there, we do have the tennis courts there, and if you want to walk into the restroom facility, you have two stalls, that's it, for a showcase situation where people come down from the city, I know I can speak to you about this, but for baseball games, they come down in busloads of people. It's really kind of a disgrace. I, I, I have to say it in that way, and I know we've been saving tax dollars, but you've got the beautiful pond in the back that people can walk to, people can enjoy, they can have photographs there. This really is a showcase item in our town, and I have to agree wholeheartedly that this is something that we need to spend dollars on, because guess what? We get dollars back. I'm not sure we're getting a million dollars back, but, you know, Terry, you do a phenomenal job, Fourth of July. How many people come there on the Fourth of July and sit there? I'm not saying we have to spend a million dollars, but this is something that gives back to the community on a continual basis. And this is dollars and cents, and this is a field that is extremely... And this is a field that is extremely utilized. And I think it's very important for us to support something that gives back to the basketball court, the tennis court, the softball field, the baseball field, the skate park field. I think a lot of kids in town utilize this and I know the high school does when they have gym days. They're always walking down there. They're always going down there. It's our responsibility to maintain and improve something that is giving back to the kids. Because guess what? They're not playing finger games when they're down there.
Right.
They're not on the computer when they're down there. They're actually getting exercise and that's important. Sorry, I talk too much, but.
No, I agree. I think it would be nice to upgrade that bathroom facility and the concession stand. But what about skateboard park, Terry? There's nothing in the budget for that? I know there were talks several months ago.
Right, that's still ongoing.
Or getting lighting out there.
Well, there is lighting at the skate park.
On one side, right?
It lights up the whole, the whole park. At that time, there was a, we had some issues with vandalism of the box that controls the lighting. So that's been repaired, but we have a very active and enthusiastic group of citizens who are, who actually initiated, came to the rec commission meetings asking that they be able to raise funds to put towards improvements at the skate park. The rec commission was.
They did raise some money. They had.
They did. They did.
Had a big function.
And they're continuing their efforts. And the rec commission has authorized the reformation of the skate park advisory committee and that's underway now. We have it advertised in the, on the town website and it'll be in the newspaper within the coming week for interested parties who'd like to be involved with the planning for either improvements and/or expansion of the skate park. So that's in process. The rec commission is very supportive of it and.
And Rob is involved in that, right? From Drift? Is that the name of his show?
He has been an interested.
Has a lot of interest in that.
Yeah. Party as well as high school students who use the park regularly. And adults.
Yeah.
Who use the park. So it's a kind of a multi-generational activity now. And we've seen that with the number of folks who are interested in seeing it be improved or expand.
Expanded. I know they wanted to expand into that, what's that of the skate park?
The inline skating. That's been.
And then there was talk about fencing to like protect them. I don't know, weren't we talking about that?
There's a number of different options for what would be best for that site and/or whether or not another site would be appropriate. We're putting everything on the table in terms of what the options are for the skate park. And the committee will be very involved with presenting ideas and thoughts on that. So that'll be starting after the February rec commission meeting when they'll be establishing the actual committee.
How often is the inline skating park used? Because I never see anybody over there.
We have, that is one of the issues with that park. We do have a group that uses it for inline hockey. Although it's a relatively short season, we have used it for some programs with the rec department. We had a bicycle day for youngsters because of its enclosed nature, bike safety and kind of a bike rodeo event that we held this past fall. We rent it. We've had, there've been birthday parties there. But it's relatively underused as compared to all of the other components of Old Mountain Field.
Well, in addition to that, I would have to say that you have to remember how many children go to the high school that park outside of, you know, right there in front of Old Mountain Field. But not only that, you have that walking path that, I can't call them children because they're young adults at that point, but who utilize that to circumvent the roads and, you know, go up towards Broad Rock. So I would hate to see something not be spent that could utilize the upcoming youth in the town. So I'm kudos for this projection on the budget. Maybe not everything on the budget, but this one I think is important because I think it gives back to the community, not just the children. It gives back to everybody.
And it's so visible and centrally located.
Terry, would you anticipate that the skate park would be a capital improvement next year?
It's a possibility. Once there's a kind of a strategic plan for the future, that there would be more of an established estimate that we'd be able to present something at that point.
And this $400,000 for the restroom and the concession, that's till 2021. Are we sort of socking away $65,000 a year? Is that what's going to be in the capital?
That's correct. There's, I believe it's $60,000 a year for the six-year period. That'll get us some of the money, but it's still going to have us $200,000 short. And again, this is another one of those areas that, the reason it's so expensive is when you're talking about a proper concession area, you've got to look what we built at Broad Rock Fields. I mean, you end up, we have to put the kitchen facilities in there as well. It can be expensive.
Food trucks.
Okay, moving along, we go into the senior programming. The first, and this is on page 43. The Adult Day Services Center, I hope everybody's familiar with where that is on Old Post Road. The Adult Services Center services approximately between 14 and 18 seniors that are in need of day services on a day-to-day basis, five days a week. Most of the program is labor-intensive in terms of the cost of that program. Program costs about $300,000 a year. What we're looking for at this point is, let me see if I can find a picture. It would be at the very end. The back of the building, when we put the addition on, and the addition was put on two years ago, we have a broad area that we can put a deck on. But the deck that would have to be constructed is going to cost about $30,000. One, based on the size of it, but two, more importantly, because of the handicapped accessibility requirements and the ramping that's going to be necessary. So the estimated cost is about $30,000. So far, we've got about $10,000 that's been raised through private funds for that purpose. What we're looking for is a commitment of tax dollars of about $15,000 that would be used to allow us to put that forward. I do want to put one caveat out. We've got to have some major discussions, both at the staff level and then at the council level in terms of our Adult Day Services program, in terms of utilization and what municipal costs are. Changes over the past year have been that there's been a private Adult Day Services program that's opened in the community. The reason we've been involved with Adult Day Services particularly is because there was no other safe haven. There was no program available. If that program is going to be available on a private sector basis and the client base that we've served can be served by them as well, we have to look at, do we have competing interests that are not necessary to be competing? At this point, the private service that's opened has just opened. We're not sure how long it's going to be or whether it's going to be something that is going to be there a year or two years from now. We will be sitting down with the private people and talking with them in terms of where we go. Adult Day Services is a regional service. Because we're working with senior programming, if we open up this type of a service and the grants that we receive from senior programming, we have to be open to everybody. So it means that we're servicing Narragansett, we're servicing North Kingstown. We've also got a few residents that come in from Charleston or from, is it Exeter?
Exeter.
And in fact, Terry has already attended one budget hearing asking for a donation. But what we have to do is to determine what the long-term future will be for this type of an operation. And obviously, we don't want to make capital improvements if in fact we're not going to be running the program for multiple years. I'm not suggesting that we're closing the program. All I'm saying is that I want to make it clear that anything that we do here has got to be part, both on a capital and an operating basis, based on how it fits into our overall budget. With a $300,000 program, I think that the municipal cost, tax dollar-wise, is about $60,000 from South Kingstown. But it also requires contributions of about $30,000 from Narragansett and another, was it $25,000, I think, from North Kingstown. Where are those communities to say we're not going to contribute anymore? All of that cost overrun would come to South Kingstown. We then have to look at it in terms of how many residents do we actually have that are being serviced and at what type of cost? And is that taking away costs that could be associated with a broader senior population? If in fact, the services are locally available. Because the main thing is that the Adult Day Services is a very important program for families that need respite care. And we've got to ensure that that type of program remains. But where it's going to be or how it's going to be is something that Terry and I and Trish have been working in terms of initial budget developments on so that we can sit down and talk with Peter Stoddy as to where he's going with his program. Again, we should provide services as a funding source of last resort. And that's what we've done with this program in the past. But our concern is, is a new program something that's going to be there in two years from now? Is it a case that what we're planning on doing is presenting this as a full-fledged budget item for the 15, 16-year in our operating budget? But we'll also be talking so that we can provide better information to you when the operating budget comes up on where the program goes. And obviously, the timing of when we would put this deck on would be dependent on what our future is with the program. But I want to be upfront about it. We are still proposing the money at this point. But again, it would go into the capital reserve and it wouldn't be spent until we felt that we had, you know, concrete plans as to the viability of the existing program going forward.
Steve, you might have just answered the question for me subliminally. But we have discussed this in the past and I just want to make sure we are getting our just dues from the other towns. And if I'm not mistaken, in other meetings that we've shared conversations about this, we were not funded to the degree that we felt that we should be. I could be wrong about that, absolutely. But I want to make sure we're on the right track to make sure that other towns that are utilizing our resources equally pay. I think North Kingstown was a very good example about.
Right. North Kingstown and Narragansett are equal funding partners. And each year, we do a detailed accounting of the number of client days that we serve the residents from the co-share partners of North Kingstown and Narragansett. But where we are falling short is with clients from other communities. We won't turn them away. And if they're private pay, they will pay a greater amount. But the majority of our clients for the past two and three years are Medicaid or copay eligible through state reimbursement. And there's a cap on what the state will reimburse the program for, which amounts to about half of what we pay per day for a client. So we have each year in the past, well, for many years, we have sought from the outlying communities but who are still in the South County region, some assistance explaining how we provide our services. We'll continue to do that. That number seems to be growing because we are getting people from outside of the three communities that offset the budget, which therein lies one of the problems.
I understand. I do.
Yeah, but we want to be clear that Narragansett and North Kingstown have been funding based on what their proportionate share is and they've never questioned it.
Right.
Where we have the difficulties are people coming from other communities where those communities haven't made the commitment. But one of the concern factors that we have is that there's no legal responsibility for either of those two communities to contribute first dollar. They have, but as money gets tighter, it may well be a case that they look at it and say, well, there's five people coming from North Kingstown. They're spending, they've got 92 days a year that they're there. We don't believe that providing you with $25,000 for those five people is a good investment on our part. They haven't, but they certainly could. And what we're looking at is, I mean, the long and the short of it is, it costs us $105 a day per resident. And with what the state's capped their prices are, many of these folks, we're getting less than half of that. So by the time you're done, the three municipalities are funding whatever that shortfall is. And they're funding it similar to what we do with wastewater. They're funding it based on proportionate share. So it changes on a yearly basis. If you have five residents and one resident only comes for three days and the other resident comes 180 days, it can be a huge number one year and a small number the next year. What we've done over the years is we've taken a three-year average so that it takes the bumps out. But Narragansett and South Kingstown have been, Narragansett and North Kingstown have been great partners. And Narragansett's been a great partner for us with our senior center. They contribute not just to the nutrition program, but they also contribute to the operational costs associated with the center. It's a good regional program because people realize that people who live in South Kingstown and Narragansett are still the same people. And when they want to have the luncheons, they're not looking at the geographic boundaries. They're looking at where their friends are.
It's a day out at a restaurant. The facility is so beautiful, truthfully. I just want to make sure that we're all stepping up to the plate in terms of their share responsibility and maybe we're not at this point. But the times I have visited the senior center and gone to the functions there, it's absolutely wonderful.
Page 44 shows a breakdown of what the senior program costs are going to be for the, as we go forward. The, you know, what we're looking at is the deck at the Adult Day Services and we're also looking at interior rehab. Our facility's been in operation for several years now. It's going to need some facelift. And also, we need to purchase new service chairs for the client base that are there. The chairs that we have go back to when we originally opened the facility. So those changes are going to need to be made based on an ongoing operation. As far as the adult, the senior center facility itself, I'll let Terry address that with you.
We have funding in the six-year plan for some interior improvements. Again, just for regular maintenance of the interior of the building. That includes painting, carpet replacement, those types of items. We've also got funding in place to start a reserve fund for roof replacement of the building. It was opened in the year 2000. The roof is 15 years old. We need to start looking at repairs and/or replacement over the next 10-year timeframe. The cost of a roof is significant and I had an average and an estimate. It's quite high, $140,000, I believe. In which case, we'd like to start putting reserve funds away so that we can address that, replacing the roof when the time comes and not have to put it all out there in one lump sum. We've also got funds set aside or earmarked for HVAC unit replacements. Those are rooftop units that, again, they're aging. We've had two units that have undergone major repairs within the last three years. We're in the process of, actually, this council just awarded a bid for the full replacement of two units on the roof. There's a total of six rooftop units and so we're. And so we're looking to be able to have funding set aside for the replacement of those other units which inevitably will start to break down. And so we're looking to have that in place as well, so that we're prepared when the time comes.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'd like to take us on to the pay-as-you-go portion of the recreation. And that starts on page 83. And I think we can run through this pretty quick because we've talked about most of the items. On page 83, we're showing you the park improvement rehabilitation cost of $120,000, as well as the equipment acquisition replacement requirements for another $89,000. The display on page 83 that's up on the board now gives you a listing of each of the projects that are anticipated. In '15, '16, we will be looking at the parking lot lights that need replacement at the Broadrock Play Fields. The existing fixtures won't allow us to put the LEDs in. We need to have greater efficiency in terms of those lights. And we're looking at about a $5,000 cost associated with that. As far as the Green Hill Park, we're looking at a rehabilitation of the basketball court. That facility gets a great deal of use, particularly on the weekends, as far as probably ages 20 through 60 that are playing basketball there, both on a Saturday and Sunday period. And we need to be able to maintain that in terms of some court rehabilitation, just the resurfacing and repainting of the lines to prevent cracking of that surface. The parks maintenance garage area, what we're looking to do is to install a 20-by-20 asphalt square that would be used for storage of maintenance materials. Right now, it's going on a gravel base. It's not efficient. And also, if it's wet conditions that we have, some of the stuff that they're storing is on pavement that's set aside. That's part of our public works. So this would provide them with their own area. We're looking at about a $7,000 cost on that. We've also got West Kingston Park with restroom facility upgrades that are necessary. Those are the things that we're looking at doing in the '15, '16 year. We're also going to be putting, funding aside for the other major projects that we've already talked about, the Old Mountain Field tennis courts. We need the $50,000. That's going to be done. That actually will be done in '15, '16 because we've got the $40,000 from the '13, '14 year. The boat ramp, we'll be putting money toward that. We'll be putting money toward the town beach. And we'll be putting money toward the, to deal with the tennis court lighting project that's scheduled for the Village Green. I want to remind the council that if you look at pages 111 through 112, what we've prepared for you there is a listing of all of the park projects that are planned over the next six years. So when you look at that, you'll see that for the '15, '16 year, you've got the Broadrock $5,000. You've got the $6,000 for the tennis court improvements and so forth. And this takes you out for, what are we planning to do in each of those different parks? Now, this is not set in stone. What the rec department will do on a yearly basis is they will reevaluate what the priority projects are, and they'll change the priorities based on if there's any safety issues that come to bear, or if there's different cost estimates that need to be revised. What we attempt to do, as you can see from the page 112, the bottom line is what we're looking to do is to spend almost a million dollars over the six-year term with the 17 parks that we're dealing with. We could spend considerably more money if we had it available, but this is the most that we think we can incorporate into the long-term capital programming. So this gives you an idea of where we're going in terms of the different park projects. If you move on to page 113, 113 will also show you what does the parks department need as far as equipment over the next six years. And that's what's incorporated into their six-year schedule. And we'll talk about just the 15, 16-year equipment acquisitions as we move forward. So we've talked about Old Mountain Field. We've talked about Marina Park. And we've talked about the beach and the Village Green. If there's no questions on those pay-as-you-go items, then the next section is dealing with the, on page 85, which is the listing of the vehicle replacements that the department is requesting for the '15, '16 year. Terry, you want to walk through your equipment?
Sure. The first item is a stakebody dump truck, which we are proposing to purchase as a new vehicle to add to the fleet for the Parks Division. And we've got, the reason for a stakebody truck primarily is because it handles better in terms of adding large amounts of whether it's trash or debris or materials from work that's being done. The high sides of that allow our guys to be more efficient with moving them. The truck is at $38,000. It's also used year-round for snow removal, so there will be a plow attached to that truck. What it also does is it will enable us to have a fourth crew out on the roads and in the parks for three seasons out of the year, which we are finding because of the level of use of the parks. The added dog park use. We'll be also maintaining the new comfort station on Main Street that a fourth crew, particularly during the very high volume seasons of spring, summer, fall, is necessary. And so we're seeking $38,000 for the purchase of a new vehicle. We're also proposing funding for replacement of a 2004 sedan as a pool vehicle for use by leisure services staff. That includes the recreation department, primarily rec division staff, myself, and also staff from the senior center. It would be used for travel to sites for programming. It would be used for travel to home visits for the senior program, as well as travel to any type of training activity that would happen. And that would be replacing a vehicle that is currently out of commission. And the amount proposed is $20,000 for that vehicle.
Terry, can I ask you about this administrative vehicle? What does everybody use, what do you use now if the vehicle's out of commission?
Currently, what we're doing is using when a pool car becomes available at Town Hall, which isn't all the time. I'm using my personal car at the moment. I mean, I don't have to, but I choose to.
Is there a reason why you can't be reimbursed for mileage or anything?
No, that's an option, mileage reimbursement. But we find that one vehicle is suitable for the several staff people that might be using it because they're not typically always out of the building all at the same time. So that's a reason for that.
I didn't even know you had one.
Well, it hasn't been in operation for the last year.
Yeah, it's transmission problems. We're also proposing replacement of three walk-behind mowers that are in need of replacement. We've got a 2001 and a 1999 that have really more than provided us our money's worth that we're ready to replace those. And a 2008 John Deere mower also, that while it's a little younger, it takes the brunt of the activity when we have our crews out. So we're proposing funding for the replacement of all three of those walk-behind mowers. We also will cycle out our trailers, our equipment trailers. And we're proposing for one trailer to be replaced for $9,500. And we're also proposing an attachment to our Bobcat Tool Cat machine, which is a multi-use machine that enables us to maintain areas like the bike path, both in, actually, four seasons out of the year. And this year, we're looking to purchase a blower that will help the parks crew more efficiently and quickly clear the bike path. And again, they maintain the bike path year-round because in the wintertime, we will attempt to plow half the bike path, and then the other half would be left unplowed for winter sports, such as cross-country skiing. But the blower would help during the fall, the summer. They're on it weekly clearing off debris from the path so that it's safe for bicycles and rollerbladers and walkers.
We've talked about the projects with the Adult Day, and we've talked about the roof set aside, and we've talked about the HVAC improvements. I'm not sure there's anything else we would do with that. If there's no other questions on the leisure, rec, and senior programming, then I'd say that the last thing we need to cover tonight, it starts on page 74 of your document, and that's fair share development fees. I want to spend a little time on this to make sure that new members understand what we're required to do here. Fair share development fees come under the town zoning ordinance. And on a yearly basis, the capital improvement program is vested with the responsibility of reviewing what the values are associated with those fees. Revenue that's generated from fees earmarked for two types of facilities. One is recreational facilities, and the other would be educational facilities. The educational fair share fees provide limited reimbursement on capital costs associated with the development of new school facilities and is collected at the time of the issuance of a building permit, the certificate of occupancy. The revenues from the fair share fees are used to pay down the debt service associated with the bonds. What we're using it for now is specifically to pay down costs associated with the Broadrock Middle School development. The project that, I'll catch up with my forms. The recreational facilities, right now, recreational fair share fees, we use about $70,000 a year to pay down a portion of the debt service that's associated with Broadrock. On the open space conservation, what we're using that for is a number of different projects. Those projects are identified on the different projects that we've already gone over. As a, for instance, you've got the, we're proposing $50,000. That's going for the Old Mountain Field, Fieldhouse redevelopment. $20,000 on the Noids Farm. The Bike Path to the Commons was another $200,000. A million for the recreation, the recreation center, the community gym. And we're paying down debt on the Green Hill Park to the tune of $450,000 over the next six years. So there's about $1.7 million that'll be spent to pay down costs associated with open space or recreational land development that comes from this. So now the question is, well, where does that come from? Let's deal first with the educational fair share. Originally, when education fair share fees were established, it was at a time when we had a growing population within the school systems. And we were adding school buildings or school additions on a very frequent basis. So what we would do on a yearly basis is we would estimate what the growth of the enrollment was going to be, estimate when we would need to build the new buildings, and we would come up with a cost per seat for that. That became, wasn't a valid method to continue with after the 2010, '11 year, where we started looking at, rather, what would the cost be for obtaining about a 50% reimbursement for the costs associated with the bonds that were outstanding for the Broadrock School. We, so what we looked at in developing the costs is we looked at, and this chart is in your document, and it's on page 77. We looked at what the costs were. To build the middle school at Broadrock was $12.6 million. That included the athletic fields, as well as the building equipment and supplies. So we spent $12.6 million. It was anticipated that 50% of the seats would be occupied over the life of, the first 20 years of that building would be occupied by students that did not live in, were going to be living in housing that was constructed subsequent to the construction of the school. So it was fair to say that we would take 50% of the cost of the building and look to recover that with new house construction. We looked at what the interest cost was as well. So the $12,006 was what cost the facility. The $5.9 million is the cost associated with what interest on the bonds would be that were paid over the 20 years. We then looked at what the state aid would be that would pay for, pay off the bonds. At that point, it was a 30% reimbursement, which was the $5.5 million. So what we ended up with was a net cost of $12.9 million, of which 50% would be $6.5 million that we would look to recover from fees. We, at that time, we were also concerned that there was the threat for litigation that, because this was when we were starting out with fair share fees. So what we recommended to the council, and council accepted, was to take a 20%, 25% discount on what we assumed to be true costs as a means of being able to not go into court if a court action was necessary and have to deal with penny for penny. Or rather, to say, "This is what the number is. We've even discounted it by 25% so that if somebody wants to object to the legitimacy of our formula, they can't object to it if the discount's been taken." So it brought it down that we said, "We wanted a fair share of about $4.8 million from new construction." On page 78, what we did is we looked at it, and we said, "Okay, if we're going to recover $4.865 million, then it means that we need to look at, well, how much have we recovered so far?" So far, the fair share fees that have come in since the bond issue was let is about $3,650,000 that we've used to retire. That's what's been collected. So it means that there's another $1.2 million that would need to come. There's about eight years remaining on the initial 20-year schedule for the debt service, which would mean that we would, and we would anticipate that we would collect about, on average, of $115,000 a year over the next eight years, or $920,000. That would mean we'd be short by $295,000 in collection. My recommendation would be not to change the value of the fees from what they were in the current year, which is $2,162. If you truly wanted to make it so that you were going to collect all of the $4.865 million, you'd have to put the fee up next year to $2,900. I think that that's not necessary. If we want to see the economy increase, we want to see housing construction, we want to see jobs, it's a disincentive if we were to put those fees, that fee up by about $758. So the recommendation to you at this point is that we recognize that we are not anticipating that we would collect all of the targeted number. But at the same time, I also think that with the slowdown that's occurred in the housing, there may not be a 50-50 split in the students that are housed within that development as being from housing that occurred subsequent to the construction of that school. So I would recommend that you keep it at the $2,162. The second fee that, so if you keep it at the $2,162, we really have a three-step fee for the education. If it's a construction of a house that's three bedrooms, we're looking at the $2,162. If we're looking at two bedrooms or less, then we would look at a 50, we would look at that as being a 50% share. So it would go down to $1,081. If it was an accessory apartment, the likelihood of having impact on the schools would be minimized again by 50%, so the collection rate would be... minimized again by 50%, so the collection rate would be at $541. That's what the fee schedule is in place today. That's what the fee schedule is, it's proposed for the 15-16, 15-16 year. Have I made that clear as to how we've set up the numbers?
Steve, these are just one-time only for new construction fees, right?
That's correct. It's collected at the time of the certificate of occupancy. It does add to housing costs because if you're going to charge somebody $2,162 for a three-bedroom home, and then you're going to charge them for the recreation fees, you're adding $5,000. Now, the logic in the past has been, well, what you're adding is $5,000 roughly to what their mortgage price is that's paid over a 20-year period. Well, you can't just look at that because it's not just the principal that that person's paying on that $5,000. It's also the principal and the interest. So fair share fees-
But someone who purchases an existing home doesn't have these fees.
No, there's no fees on, this is only for new construction. Because the only thing you can use these, any of the revenue that's generated from either recreation fees or from education fees have to be used for new service, expansion of services. It can't be used, you know, it'd be great if we could say, well, gee, we're just going to take 100% of recreation fees and we're going to build the $400,000 facility at Old Mountain Field. Well, that's a replacement. A portion of it could be considered new because it would be an expansion of an existing asset, but it couldn't be the entire. Same way with, when we dealt with the, with the education fees, we wanted to tie the collection directly to repayment of bonds on a new school facility. So it's very important that we look at this as being only for new construction. When you look at where we're using the rec fees, the rec fees are being used only where it's a development of something new. The, the $200,000 that we've proposed for the Walkway to the Commons, the million dollars that we proposed that would go into the community gym, those are the type of activities. The expansion of the, you know, of the, of the boat ramp, those types of things are things that we could use it for, but we have to be sure that what we're doing is expanding the asset rather than replacing or modifying an asset. So those would be the fees for, for education, same as what they are in the current year. When we look at the rec, when we look at the recreation fair share fees, there's a different methodology that's in place there, and that's also a two-tier system. In 2015-16, we're going to maintain the same methodology that we have in the past, and that was last changed back in 2011-12. The structure, I think it's easier to show the numbers. Theoretically, the purchase and development of a new municipal park plan is projected at $115,000 per acre. That number comes from the assessment roll of what one acre in the, in the town would sell for as a building lot. That's up from $110,000 with the assessment values that Gene gave to me this year. So it's about a $5,000 increase. This cost per acre, as I said, is based on the 10,000 square foot lot that would be sold in town from the previous year. The comprehensive community plan indicates that, that you need 10.5 acres of recreation land for every 1,000 new people that move into the community. So if, and then we have to look at, what does the typical house generate in terms of new people? The average single-family dwelling generates 2.6 persons per household. If it's a elderly occupancy only, the, the occupancy goes down to a 1.95, and that's based on Bureau Census profile of general demographic characteristics from 2010, that we use those figures. So then, what we, what do we do? We take the value of the land, take the value of the land at the $115,000, multiply that times 10.5 acres. When you multiply that times the 10.5 acres, you get $1,207,500. Divide that by 1,000, which is the value of 1,000 persons per that, and it means that the cost per, per person to be able to develop a park, a new park, is $1,207. The $1,207 is then factored by 2.6 people per house, which then gives you the, the rate of $3,140. And the, again, just as we did with the rec, with, with the education fees, we would look at two bedrooms or less, because it would have less people per unit, would, would pay a discounted price, which would take it down to the $2,355. So you'd have two different fees. Unfortunately, with the $5,000 increase on the cost of the land that was provided by the assessors, it would increase the fee by $273 over what the current year rate is. Current year rate was at $2,867 for the, for the rec fees. That's really a council determination on whether you want to raise that fee or whether you want to leave it at the current rate. We're giving you the methodology that's been used. If you want to discount from that methodology and keep it at the current rate, you could do that as well. But my job, based on the zoning ordinance and the comp plan, is to provide you with the methodology that I'm required to give you the information from. So at this point, based on if you use 115, the council could determine that they want to stay with $110,000 value and stay at the $2,867. It's a policy decision on your part. I'm giving you what the option, option values would be. Is there questions as far as how we're doing this? No? All right, let's go to the exemption. The other thing that the zoning ordinance says is that if we're going to have affordable housing units constructed in the community, we do not want to charge them an impact fee. So if that's the case, they then said, okay, well then what are we trying to, trying to accomplish? Well, you're going to have to define what is a affordable housing unit, what's the value of it? How's that determined? It's determined based on 80% of the income value for a four-person household. As I've shown you on the chart there, that's $57,500 for the 2014 year. With our tax rate at $15.48.2 for a thousand and an interest rate, which was the rate that Rhode Island Housing was using at 4.12% with a 30-year mortgage, they came up with a calculated value that the maximum low and moderate income sale price would be $188,922. If, if a house were going to sell at the $188,922 or less, and if the property was willing or required to have a 99-year easement on the house to keep it as an affordable unit, they would be exempted, they would be exempted from the, the payment of the impact fee. Probably over the last five years, I think we've had maybe five or six exemptions that have been granted, it's been very few. The application's filed with the planning department and it's submitted for recommendation to my office, but it's based on this methodology. So we would have to see the $188,922 or less as far as the sale price. We would have to see that there was an actual commitment to keep it affordable and that there would be a third party responsible for ensuring the affordability of the unit. If the unit were to sell in the future, there would be an equity, equity distribution that would be kept with the affordable. What they would look at is, let's say it sold in five years, and in five years, an affordable unit in South Kingston was worth $200,000. Then it would mean that the equity that they could get out of the house would only be the difference between what the, the new affordable housing value would be to the old. They wouldn't be able to take any other increase. Let's say they could sell it for much more than that. So this is a way of, one, trying to address the 10% affordable housing component on the state comprehensive plan and the towns, the towns comprehensive community plan as well. And what it's also attempting to do is to not to, to price out, you know, another $5,000 or $6,000 in impact fees on an affordable unit that would then mean that, that there would be less likelihood that that unit could sell. I still think that the value that the state with Rhode Island Housing and Mortgage has come up with at $188 is pretty low, based on the fact that the land values themselves in South Kingston are going to make it very, very difficult for somebody on a $57,000 income to find a house at $188,000. But that's what we're required to do based on the way RIMFAC has got that program set We've worked, we've worked through the numbers. These are the numbers that we have to use. That's the only way an exemption can be granted.
I think that the $188 is going to be very difficult for us to attain based on the cost of housing down here. But if I'm not mistaken, please correct me. According to the state requirements of the 10% affordable housing, we are, we're not bad, we're better than other communities, but we're only at just over 5.36, 5.46?
5.3 is it, Vinnie? Yeah, it's, it's close to that.
Yeah, we're pretty, we're pretty close to that. But according to now the proposal with the roadmap situation, I get even more concerned. And how do you address the situation that they want to do cluster housing or affordable housing units in condos or apartment units that can be built? And how, how are we going to bridge that gap?
I'm not sure I can answer that question for you. I think that what, what we're attempting to do with affordable housing is that we're, we're not allowing subdivisions of more than six units to go forward without having a density bonus available to them so that we're not going to lose ground. But I don't think that you're going to gain ground. One of the problems in suburban communities is that, that affordable housing, for the most part, needs to be built in areas where there's public transportation available and other resources available for those folks. Most of the communities that have got over the 10% are the urban areas or places like, you know-
Of course.
Areas like North Kingston that saw Naval Base closed, where a number of units were made available. I think that our objective is to reach the 10%. I think, though, that we have to work within the financial parameters that are available. Land use and, and land value is going to make a big difference in this community in terms of whether or not affordable units can, can be constructed. I don't know if you want to deal with the question, Vin, but I don't think that 10% is something that we're going to see unless, unless we were looking at, at bonding in the construction of a huge number of, of units.
I think we've made good progress, well, reasonable progress, and I think really that's all the, the state expectation is, moving towards it. I think the state recognizes that it's not just something they can mandate and then magically it will appear on the local level. Affordable housing to be built requires usually a consortium of funding sources, federal, state, or local subsidies, what have you, or, you know, foundation money or what have you. And it just simply doesn't, you know, you have to line all those things up. It's kind of like getting Jupiter and Mars in line to, to get it done. But we've done, I think reasonably well with some of the federal programs, like La Casa, for example, that was built off Samuel Rodman, or the 10 units that were built adjacent to the police station. Those were financed through federal programs. And the fact that the town exempts affordable housing from impact fees or the fair share fees, that is considered a local subsidy towards, so that, in a sense, helps us meet the requirements of the state law in terms of, you know, providing a local, you know, impetus towards building up affordable housing. On Kenyon, Kenyon Terrace property, that's going to be coming forward as well this year. So we've made small progress. We did backslide, as did a lot of communities, when they used the, the decennial census as the basis, year-round housing, to calculate what the 10% requirement would be. And so, you know, when the 10, the 2010 census numbers came in, we had a bigger housing basis to calculate the percentage on. But, you know, we've, making small progress and, you know, inclusionary zoning or, you know, it's not going to be one thing that, that does it for us, I think, and the good faith effort is, and what the town has been making. And so it's, you know, it's a difficult problem, and I think the recognition on the state level is that, you know, I think that's what the expectation is, a good faith effort, and that's certainly been the case here in SK.
I'm assuredly, I think they do. I think the state has, there's less federal money available to help these programs and there's less state money. Or, you know, when they, the bonds have passed, you know, the Holmes Rhode Island Bond, and, you know, that was distributed all over the state, but not, you know, not a whole lot came down this way. You know, more, more in the urban core. But, you know, as, as the manager said, areas that have lesser land costs and public infrastructure and public transit, you know, do tend to have a leg up in terms of seeking those state dollars. You know, and maybe that's, to some degree, appropriate.
Thank you. And Vin, trailer parks are not included, right, in affordable housing?
No, there's been moves over time to expand the definition of affordable housing towards, you know, some of those communities. And I think in certain places, they can qualify if, but not, not, as I understand it, not typically in a leased land environment where they've condominiumized some of them. I think, North Kingston, again, had some trailer parks. I think that there's certain of those that may be individually owned in terms of the, the land base, and those could, you know, qualify. But there is, interestingly enough, next, next Wednesday at the Warwick Public Library, there's a, a meeting to talk about inclusionary zoning or inclusive, including, where the statewide planning is convening and to talk about some of the issues with this because it's an issue that, it's not static in terms of how it's dealt with from a state level or on the local level. And as the manager will be speaking about shortly, about the fee in lieu of aspect, there's, the recent state law passage has kind of shifted the ground on a lot of communities as to how they deal with, whether they could take a fee in lieu of the production of affordable housing. And that will be something that will be coming forward for your consideration as a public hearing item, I believe on February the 9th. Not, not to steal your thunder, Steve, but-
Way to head, Vinnie.
Vin, before you sit down, excuse me while I think out loud for a second. But we began the conversation, or early on, we were talking about real estate transfer fees or being used for open space acquisition. At some point, we're getting to a point of amount of preserved land where we're happy with it. Is that in the comprehensive plan at this point? What percentage that might be?
Specifically, no. I think that'd be more of a policy determination. I mean, and there have been discussions in the past about, and some states take portions of the real estate transfer tax and devote that towards affordable housing production. Vermont, Vermont, for example.
There was a proposal last year for that to increase to $2.20, up to, I think, $4. And have the difference go as new dollars that would go toward affordable. So there has been talk about it, but obviously, every time you raise a tax, somebody's paying it.
Right. Well, I was, you know, if we're, if we get to a point where we're happy, or at least we're getting close to it and we're still devoting some money towards open space acquisition-
I think your point is that, that there's $1.70 that's going into open space preservation at this point, reserve fund. And what you're asking is, could the council as a policy say 50 cents of that or $100 of that would be set aside in a separate reserve that would be for affordable housing? Certainly you could. You could also put it in as a general fund revenue to offset property tax increases as well. You could do whatever you wanted with that $1.70. Right now, the 50 cents that comes in from real estate conveyance stays with the general fund. The other 170 goes to, to open space. There's no reason that the, the $1.70 needs to continue to go to open space other than to provide resources to continue to pay the debt service or to buy additional development rights or additional land. That's a council preference based on what they want to do. But you could put it in the general fund, you could put it to a, a new fund for affordable, or, or any other combination that you'd want to try.
Is there an appropriate venue to have that conversation with the community? Like, what is the prior, I mean, I know that the five of us can argue about it, but I'd-
Well, that's really a, a question for, for the, the council to decide how they'd want to proceed. I mean, the council that decided they wanted to take the buck 70, just decided they wanted to move the dollar 70 into it. They said, well, you don't need it in the general fund at this point because it would be an increase rather than a replacement, so we'll set it aside. Right, wrong, or different, that was the decision that they made at that time. I'm not sure that you wouldn't get 12 different ideas on how to redistribute those dollars. And I think a lot of people would say, if it can reduce my taxes, I'd- And I think a lot of people would say, "If it can reduce my taxes, I'd rather have the $1.70 stay with the general fund." Some people may say, you know, that, "Take the $1.70 and split it up X, Y, Z way." But that would be really a preference for the council to decide on.
But there is an affordable housing mandate that we're not meeting.
There's no right answer because you're never going to make everybody happy if you're splitting the pie. The last item that we're going to deal with tonight, now that the press is gone. The last item we're going to deal with is the in lieu fee, and I think Vin will stay up with us. We want to make sure that the council is aware, Monday night, you're going to have an order of advertisement, which is to deal with the in lieu fee requirements. As I noted in the document on page 80, inclusionary zoning in South Kingston provides for off-site exaction. What does that really mean? It means right now that when we, anybody develops a subdivision of more than six units, they're required under the zoning to provide for, we provide them with a density bonus of 10%. So if you have somebody who's going to build on a piece of property and it's going to be able to develop on a build-out analysis, 20 house lots, it would mean that there would, 10%, 20%, 20%. So you would have four affordable units that would be required. So now the subdivision that would normally produce 20, the town would allow them to produce 24. And the 20, those four additional units would be affordable housing units that have to be priced accordingly. That way, if you're building 20 houses, you're not going backwards as far as your percentage of affordable units in the community. The problem that the developer has is the developer may look at it and say, "Well, the land's really not big enough for me to put those additional four units in." Well, the ordinance says, "Okay, well, the planning board has the flexibility to be able to deal with that type of a problem if it truly exists." What it allows to be done is that there's different things that could be done. One is the developer can come in and say, "Look, I'll go into another area of town, I'll rehab four units, and I'll guarantee their affordability for the next 99 years." The planning board would have to accept that. They could go and buy a piece of land someplace else in town and say, "Well, I'll build the four units there." The planning board, again, would have to make the decision on whether they would agree to it. The third option that's always been out there since we put in inclusionary zoning is that it would allow us on a yearly basis to establish what the value would be if they wanted to buy out their interest in those four units. So what we would do on a yearly basis is we would determine what's the difference between the average selling price of a house in South Kingston and what is the selling price of an affordable housing unit. The difference between those two points, the delta, would be what the exaction fee would be required to that developer. So last year, when we did the analysis, we found that the difference, the delta, was $94,000. I think the price was like $320,000 to the 200, whatever it worked out to, it was a $94,000 spread. So what we said is, if that ordinance was viable, that the developer would be able to say to the planning board, "Would you agree to be paying the $94,000 for each of the four units into a fund that would allow for construction of affordable units someplace else in the town that either the town would manage or that some nonprofit, CDC, would be able to handle?" Well, there was a case in East Greenwich, and in the case in East Greenwich, the developers appealed and they said, "Nobody has the right to take that type of money from us." But what the courts looked at is, they said, "Well, you know, the General Assembly really never provided the direct authority for municipalities to be able to do that." So what they did is they really, for all intents and purposes, negated the ordinance that we had in town, and we could not deal with an in lieu fee since the East Greenwich case occurred. So during the last session of the General Assembly, the General Assembly, in their infinite wisdom, listened to the building industry and agreed that you could put the fee in, but the fee would be established by the state through Rhode Island Housing and Mortgage. The value that they established, I think, was, was it 60?
62,000.
$62,000, which was a far cry from what you would really be able to build an affordable housing unit for in South Kingston. And so what the planning board said is, and what they did is they took away the flexibility from the planning board. No longer was it a case that the planning board would be the determining body as to how the affordable housing units would be established, whether they would be required to be within the development itself, whether they'd be required to be rehabs, whether they'd be required to be new construction on some other piece of land, or to have the actual fee paid. What it said is, it's the developer's right to make the decision. So it means that today, what would occur if we keep an in lieu fee in place is that we would be giving the developer the opportunity to come in and say, "I want to build 20 houses. You're going to force me to build four. I'm not going to build those four. I'm going to give you the $62,000 times four, and you do what you want with the money." And then I think the provision also was that the money needed to be used within a certain period of time, and if it wasn't, it would go up to the state. So what the planning board did, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of the presentation, what the planning board's saying at this point is, what we're asking the council to do is to amend the zoning ordinance and take away the opportunity to negotiate a fee so that the only thing somebody can do is, because of inclusionary zoning, is to allow for either the units to be built onsite, to be rehabbed, or built on an outsite. And that there would be no right for the developer to be able to pay a fee in lieu of. So that's what's going to be coming. You'll have the order of advertisement on that. You'll have all of the background information Monday night. But essentially, I can't put anything into the capital budget this year because I expect that the ordinance is going to be amended or at least adjudicated with the council. And there's nothing for me to put into the capital budget on the in lieu because the value is being established by the state rather than giving us the local opportunity to be able to determine what that value differential should be. So that's where we are with that at this point. I'm not sure what else you need to add to it, Vin.
Well, we've never taken, we've had that on the books, I think, since 2008, and we've never taken a fee in lieu of. It was always considered to be the option of last resort if all else couldn't be done. And we have had a couple of circumstances where the units have been built onsite with the density bonus in place, so, which essentially tries to make the land cost neutral for those extra units. Because, you know, Steve used the example of a 20-lot subdivision, you could build 24. And so the four extra units, the land cost would be, you know, absorbed or spread across. We have seen circumstances where the planning board has permitted units to be rehabilitated offsite. An example would be Stone Soup Farm on South Road. They, as part of the initial phases of that, there were two rental units in Kingston right near the university that were rehabbed and, you know, became a part of our affordable housing stock. I would say that the state enabling statute, the planning board had concerned about it. It did say that you didn't have to offer the fee in lieu, but it does say it's permissible if the community wishes to. I just, we, I think the planning board was taken aback by a couple of things. One, that the reduction of what the fee would be, the fact that if the fee were paid, the developer would still get a density bonus on the site. And the differential between what the fee was calculated previously, the fee now is under the state law, is based on a statewide average of what Rhode Island housing costs incurred. So, you know, so that could be Providence, One Socket, you know, could be, you know, Richmond or Exeter as well, but it's not specific to the local experience. So the board was looking at that as an interim step. I guess it is their feeling that this issue needs further discussion at the state level to try to figure it out. You know, it's not a static issue, I mentioned earlier. And as a matter of fact, interestingly enough, the seminar that's next week, which they're trying to get a broad conversation going to figure out, you know, where do we go from this point? Because I think even though the enabling statute for the in lieu fee was not in place, when we were considering it back in '06 and '07, both Rhode Island Housing and the State Department of Administration, Division of Planning, were encouraging communities to adopt this as one of, a part of the toolkit to move towards more affordable housing, apparently without foundation at the time, but a lot of communities ventured down the primrose path of in lieu fees at that point. So it's going to be an interesting conversation, but at least at this point, the planning board feels that, you know, it's not a tool that would be appropriate, you know, just given the, you know, what comes along with it.
It also would be a public hearing that you'll conduct that I think you'll have voiced opinion from the building industry that suggests that it should be kept in place and that the value is sufficient to meet affordable housing needs. So, you know, the planning boards provide the recommendation, it's up for the council to hold a public hearing. But I don't think that this is one that, that there may be opposing opinions that would be presented on this issue because from the builder's perspective, they believe that being able to pay the money and get away from the affordable housing is in their best interest and also creates jobs. Where if they can't put the developments through because they can't either afford the affordable units because they're far greater than what the cost is on a statewide basis in given areas like South Kingston, that this should be, this should be looked at as being a viable methodology. Planning board doesn't see it that way. They see that really that local rights are being taken away again in terms of managing their housing stock. So I think there'll be a good deal of dialogue on this issue once it goes forward. I'm not aware of any other community at this point that has addressed this issue since the East Greenwich legislation was struck down.
I mean, this law was signed in, it was in July, I think July 3rd or 5th or something after the last session finished.
Vin, have you had any developers that have shown an interest in the fee in lieu of affordable housing?
Yeah, the proposal for 571 Main Street that the planning board turned down, that's been appealed to the zoning board, sitting as the plotting board of review.
So he wanted that?
Right. But we, but at the time, our attorneys told us, based on the 2011 court case, that even if somebody wanted to pay the fee in that intervening period, we couldn't take it. So...
So how many units would that development require? And the density option is a good one?
Like, I think about eight units or something, something like that.
So if you build, is it over six and then you have...
Anything more than, six or more is considered a major subdivision under state law.
So if you build just five, you don't have to have an affordable?
No, you do not. Some communities perhaps, but the way we have it set up, no.
And what does the state expect us to do? Like, set up a trust fund where we'd get in the building business, I guess? We'd have to be buying land and building affordable houses as a municipality?
You could take the money and give it to a CDC, you know, a housing corp, similar to the housing corp that was interested in buying damons.
Right.
And they would use the money to be able to create affordable housing units. So you could work with that type of agency to do it. But I think the legislation also required a certain time clock there. The money would go back upstate if it hadn't been expended with...
Although I think the law does talk about Rhode Island Housing would target the money back here, you know, to the community where it was generated, but...
So how much time are we talking about?
I think it's three years.
I think it was three years, Vin.
It's, you know, the nuance of the legislation was interesting. When it was going through the legislative process, there was a lot of, there was testimony against it, but it was, it seemed to have a lot of backing.
There was testimony in favor of it too, Vin.
Well, I realize that, but, you know, our Affordable Housing Collaborative, for example, sent correspondence to the House and Senate leadership expressing concerns about it. It's, you know, it was enacted nonetheless.
Any additional questions from council? That concludes what we were looking to go over this evening. The only remaining items that are yet to be discussed within the capital program would be the school-associated program, and we will be looking at that next Wednesday. Any questions on anything that we've presented? Be glad to, if there's more information you need on anything, we'll get that for you as well.
I have a question for Wednesday because we're going to be meeting with the school committee again. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
I said I have a question about next Wednesday because we're going to be meeting with the school committee again.
Yes.
My question is, I would like to see, I don't know who needs to forward this, maybe myself, the need for a municipal police officer at Curtis Corner, based on the fact that Mr. Pope was just promoted to dean of students, and the police station is only like five to eight buildings down. I want to know what prompted the necessity in terms of safety issues, incidents, and things of that nature that people feel that they're at peril for that? Because the cost of that is $84,000, some odd dollars, which is split in half, so our share of that is $42,000. And is it going to stop there or is it going to continue on? God forbid, I never want to see another Sandy Hook, but we just spent a big amount of dollars to promote Mr. Pope to dean of students there. And if there's an incident, you have the police station virtually right around the corner. So I want to know what precipitated the fact that there is that need. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying I want to know what precipitated the fact that there is a need for that at Curtis Corner. Obviously, they must feel there's some type of safety issue. So I did not have a chance to engage in that conversation, and it's my fault, but I would like that question answered before Wednesday, or by Wednesday, actually, at Wednesday night.
Well, I think you're asking for an answer premature to a budget. Because the school committee hasn't put a budget out yet that includes that item.
No, they did put the dollar fact out there, $42,000 and change.
I agree with you on that, but I think that there's going to be discussions. Your question is really more directed to the police department than it is to the school department. But, I mean, certainly we can advise the school committee that you'd like to discuss that matter. I think what you're going to be told is that the police department, in and by itself, this, whether we have a, have an officer in the school, what we need more than anything else at this point is additional juvenile officer time. If we weren't looking at having a resource officer, we would be looking probably to have a full-time additional police officer that would be at the detective level, that would be dealing with juvenile issues. Most of those juvenile issues that aren't occurring at the high school are occurring at your middle school level. So if you put an SRO at the school, or if you hire a juvenile officer to work in conjunction with the school and not be assigned to the school, it's six and one half dozen of the other. The police department believes that there's a need for a juvenile officer. They're prepared to have that juvenile officer independent of the school. They're also willing to allow it to be stationed during the school day in the school as well. But this isn't, this isn't a case where, I think what we're looking at is that there's services that need to be rendered in terms of managing juvenile activities within the community that can't be handled any longer with one person because we have one juvenile officer. From a department perspective, we looked at it and said, "We would be willing to go forward and ask council for approval to expand the number of offices from 52 to 53 so we could promote one more within the detective bureau." However, in discussions with the schools, they felt that it could also be of service to them to have that officer within the building. But as I said the other night when the schools were here in December, is understand that a police officer is not working for the schools. The only thing the schools would be doing is offsetting some of that cost. The police officer is still 100% a sworn police officer and reports through the chain of command. They don't report to the school department. So, I mean, you can have concern on whether or not the schools think that there's a need for an officer there. But what I'm saying to you is that I'm going to make a case to you that whether or not we have an SRO or whether we have a request to expand the workforce in the police department by one, you most likely are going to see that when my operating budget comes out. I can't say that definitely at this point. I can't say that definitely at this point because I haven't, I haven't had a chance to put the budget together, and so that's why I'm saying I think some of your question is premature. I think the focus of that meeting is supposed to be on the capital needs.
Okay.
But it's also an opportunity to talk about general items, so I think I can advise them that you've got concerns with it. All I'm saying to you is that they haven't, the school committee hasn't made a commitment to that program as of yet, to my knowledge. I think that that superintendent has included it in her preliminary budget, but that budget of theirs won't be finished until, until the middle of, middle of February. So I'm not sure you're going to get all the answers that you want, Meg.
No, that's okay, that's okay, I understand that, it has to be carried on. I'm not saying that I totally disagree with it, but I am saying that at this time, I have some questions about it. So when the time is appropriate and it needs to be discussed, it will certainly be brought up at that time.
Okay.
But thank you, I appreciate that.
The only other thing that maybe they should discuss is, it was brought up the other night, I think it was Jim O'Neill brought it up, is what's the possibility of closing the Curtis Corner School and reintegrating the fifth grade is back into the elementary schools and putting six, seven, and eight over Broad Rock? I mean, I think the discussion with the declining pupil population eventually has to be, has to be brought up, but I know we've been that road before.
I think that what the schools will tell you is that if they're going to look at redistricting, that they're going to need to study the issue in terms of what all of those ramifications are, and they're going to tell you that they are not doing that during the budget preparation for the, for the 2015, sixteen year.
Well, I realize it won't happen overnight.
Meg, I mean, Carol, I think what I'm suggesting to you is that you could ask, in terms of framing the question, as to whether or not there's a workforce being put together to take a look at that issue, because I do think that's going to take a good deal of study, and it's going to take a lot of public input because there's a lot of people with a lot of varying opinions.
Well, you know, I know how important the neighborhood schools were when we went through all of that, and I think that they made it pretty clear that that's what everybody wants, but, you know, if we are showing that we have, we're, we have too many facilities and not enough students, I think you even mentioned it the other night, we could, you know, at some point be in jeopardy of losing even more state aid over it. I mean, I think it's a future issue.
It's certainly an important discussion. All I'm saying is if you're looking for answers, you're not going to get the answers right away.
Right, oh, I understand that, but, you know, I think it's just something, it's the elephant in the room, I think.
Carol, I do agree, I think that that's something that needs to be looked at in the future, and I think closing Curtis Corner in the future would probably be the answer. I also think that the money you would save on the transportation, which has been said to be the big cost, would be huge, so you would save on transportation as well, and certainly on all the administration that's needed.
Cut down, right, cut down on the principal.
So I do think that's a discussion they won't want to have, but probably should have.
Yes.
And I agree that families would be happier about that than closing any of the elementaries.
Right, oh, we went through that.
Keeping our neighborhood schools is very important.
Yeah.
The only thing I caution you on is, don't draw conclusions without facts being in evidence, because you really, when you look at redistricting, and you may assume that transportation costs are going to go down, there may be things that you're not considering that until there's a formal evaluation made of it that they can see that. That's why I'm saying I think it's, it is a, it's a timely process that needs to be taken out so that they can look at all of the, all of the different facets that are involved with costing. Do I think something's going to have to be done? Absolutely, but I don't want to draw conclusions as what, what the answer has to be, but rather to look at the different options that are out there, because there's a number of them. I think the one that seems to have the most, most play at this point is the Curtis Corner, but if that's the case, then the analysis needs to be made on what the implications are, because one of the key factors here is, are we at a point where the enrollments at the elementary levels are sufficiently down that would allow all of those children to go back to their home schools?
Just fifth grade?
And it may be a case that you're a year or two away from that, where you would have sufficient room to be able to move all your seventh and eighth into, into Broad Rock. That's, that's some of the thing, that's why I'm saying, I don't think it's a bad discussion to have, I think it's something that really needs to be fully evaluated, but I'm saying I don't want to suggest that I can draw conclusions until I see exactly what, how the numbers would fall for each of the different components that are involved here, because it's, it's a broad range. There's some big savings as far as personnel by not having principals, nurses, and assistant principals and those types of things, but there's also other costs that they're going to incur in terms that are going to be moved back into the, into the elementaries. I'm not an educator, so I can't tell you what all of those things are that need to be studied. I'm just saying to you, as somebody who works with programs, I know sometimes you come up with what you think the conclusion's going to be and find out it's something totally different. So just don't have preconceived notions, just make sure that you get the facts before you determine what, what you really think should be the course of action. And there's going to be a lot of public vetting that's necessary on that, as there is every time we've dealt with redistricting.
I just think it should probably be a course of discussion, not necessarily a course of action, but I think that you need to start a discussion because if you're going to continue to have declining student population, that that's a discussion that needs to be started so that all that research can be done, and when the time comes, then we're in a position to make the changes.
And it seems like the most painless.
The biggest success that you can have is to have them agree that that discussion has to be had and to have them set a methodology on how that discussion's going to be handled, because then at least you've got a process, and you've got, and a process has a start and an end. If it's more amorphous where we're just talking about, yeah, we need to talk about it, it never gets going. That process, as I say, will most likely take several months for a recommendation to come out before it would even be something that would be finding out whether the public agreed with it or disagreed with it. And you need to do that outside of your budget period, and little, many things get slowed down if they're, if people are assuming they're going to be done during the summer months. So you need to pick the time of what that schedule would be, if you can get a performance of a schedule and a process, and I think you've accomplished, you know, if that's what the council thinks is important. But to think that you're going to get answers, I don't, I don't want you to have false expectations on that.
Well, I never thought I'd get any answers right away, but I mean, it does have to be talked about.
Well, again, if you can get them to...
A lot of communities are doing it, are talking about it.
I think this budget is going to be the toughest one that we have to crack right now, and we can't dictate how they spend their money, we can only dictate the approval of what the funds that are allocated to them. And I'm not saying closing a school right now is something that is even in the realm of possibility, but I think we need really to take a hard-line look at the school committee budget. That's where I have some concerns.
Well, again, what I say to you is, let's wait till we get a school committee budget to first, whether we need a hard line.
It's a...
You may get one that you say, gee, let's give them more money.
Hey, I'm hoping this comes through and it's like absolutely awesome, because the last couple of years, it really wasn't. It was, it was smart, it was good, but just based on the conversations that were had the other night, I do have some concerns.
I think next week will provide a good opportunities for us to start that conversation with the school committee. Are there any other comments, any other topics? Anything from the public? No? All right, well, with that, good night. Thank you.